Try that again. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council to order for January 13th, if you will call the roll.
Counselor Kaiser?
President.
Counselor Anderson?
Duto.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Leung?
Here.
Counselor Osik?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the general public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business, because this is our first meeting of this year, I hope you all had great holidays, is to elect a council president, Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you, I move to appoint Counselor Hoy as council president for the next year.
Second by Osik.
I'll just say to my motion, I think Counselor Hoy has done a fantastic job of being the council president, it's a tough position to be in, and I think he's well qualified after doing it a year, and I believe he wants to as well, which is always a bonus, so.
So this is his chance to back out?
That's right, yes, yes.
Okay, will there be any other nominations? Why don't we just elect couns-- or you all elect Counselor Hoy by acclamation?
Don't move.
Okay, all those favor, it's acclamation, go for it. Yeah, okay. Okay, Counselor Hoy, that resounding endorsement, you're in.
Thank you.
Okay, additions and deletions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we do have revisions to the agenda, item 3.3B, we have revised attachments on a couple of our considerations for appointment to boards and commissions, and then we have item 5.0A regarding temporary nighttime shelter, it would increase the capacity for one of our local shelters.
And we have also a proclamation.
Yes, also, we have a proclamation to add to item 1.3B honoring the life of former Mayor Mike Swaim.
Great, thank you. Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Comments? Counselors, Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to revisit an issue from a meeting before last, and I don't normally do this kind of thing from council comments, but I'm feeling very frustrated. Recently, we were considering options for addressing homelessness, and the suggestion was made by Arches staff that we could consider duration warming centers instead of our as-needed centers that we've traditionally used, it would be quicker, cheaper, and most importantly, more humane than organized camping option we were also considering. I was really surprised by the late suggestion, pleasantly surprised, I should say, and I asked the Arches staff whether they had consulted with the churches who have generously hosted the warming centers for the past several years to ensure they were willing and had the capacity to perform this expanded function. I was quite pleased to hear that they had indeed consulted and were on board with the proposal. I then made the motion to implement the and fund the proposal, council passed the motion, and a meaningful plan was in place, and everybody left the meeting optimistic and hopeful. Sadly, that was all for naught, because we learned through what, for whatever reason, miscommunication, misunderstanding, I don't know what exactly, but the churches weren't, they didn't have the capacity to handle that new burden, and they weren't able to help us in that new way. So, because we had no more meetings planned for the year, and we had just implemented the camping ban, we were sort of left with no good option, and most importantly, out of all that, people who didn't have a shelter were left with no good options, and I have spent the past month being very frustrated trying to rectify that situation, and I know how staff from Arches have a way, as well, as well as city staff, but I just want to express publicly my frustration, and I would hope that anytime somebody comes before this council and makes a statement that sounds very sure, that they're actually very sure, because we make important decisions based on the information we get, and we did that, and it didn't work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we would all join you in your frustration, Counselor, it was really a sad situation. Counselor Anderson?
I was aware that Counselor Hoy was going to do this, and I certainly agree with him, because I made the original motion, which was to, excuse me, establish a temporary tent center at Wallace Marine Park with various conditions, and when, you know, we were informed that the churches were willing to do this, then Counselor Hoy made a substitute motion. And of course, for whatever reason we were informed, the churches understandably had not come to that conclusion they were willing to do it, even though we were told. So, I believe that had the substitute motion not been made based on this, my motion would have passed, and it's a month later now, and we would have had something in place now, so in effect, we've lost that month, and I certainly concur with Counselor Hoy that we've got to trust what people say, and so when people come to talk to us, especially in an official or semi-official capacity, we need to be able to rely on that, and we relied on that to our detriment, and more importantly, to the detriment of the city and the people in the city who had no place to go, and that's, that's very disturbing to me. Now, if I can move on, Mayor, I have another disturbing thing, which is my standard discussion here, we had another pedestrian death, it was on the 600 block of Northeast Hawthorne, it was actually someone who was on a--
Skateboard.
Skateboard, thank you, all I could think of was surfboard, and I knew that was wrong, although we got some rain coming here. And her name was, I don't know if it's Jamie or Jaime, Lee Ann Hall, 42-year-old woman, and the person, this is not quite the standard thing when I talk about it, because they say it's speed and the, and it's a system, if it's once, it's an accident, if it's more than that, it's a systematic systemic problem, and in this case, the driver who hit her was charged with several serious crimes, criminally negligent homicide, I almost started talking like a lawyer there, crimneg homicide, and reckless driving, driving while suspended, just a bunch of crimes, so I think that this, on the scale of things, was an accident, as opposed to some problem with the system, but we still have way too many pedestrian deaths here. The final thing, on a good note, is that on earlier this week, early in the morning, at the Chamber of Commerce morning meeting, City Manager Powers, Chief Niblock, Chief Moore, and I, and Counselor Nanki were there to discuss the ballot measure on the payroll tax, we had a good discussion, Counselor Lewis was also there and expressed his support for the motion, and I'm happy to do that, and then I'll say, on Friday, I spoke at the city club, along with Finance Director Bob Behr, who gave the nuts of bolts, and then I gave a short talk in favor of the ballot measure, and I hope and expect to see all counselors, because we all voted for it, to refer to the voters, to be out there between now and May, and discussing things at neighborhood group meetings, at other group forums, because we need to educate the public, and we need to get the public behind this, and we need to pass this tax.
Great, thank you, thank you, Counselor, for being there, you and Counselor Nanki, as well as Lewis, for being at the chamber to discuss that, do you know what the outcome of that meeting was? Okay, no? Okay, anyone else? Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, so I think my colleagues have already talked about the frustration that we have had, and I can tell you that I have been doing what I can to look for evidence-based solutions for homelessness, I believe that our city recognizes, as do people around the state, that we have a legitimate crisis on our hands, and that this is a crisis years in the making, that we know that the homeless are many populations, not just one type of person, that we know that the shortage of affordable housing, the shortage of housing being built, period, has a lot to do with this, and it's been well documented in our recent news media. So what I've done in the last month is meeting with community partners, talking to first responders, talking with city staff, touring a building, all in an effort to find a way to get our homeless off the streets as soon as possible, and into services, and getting them housed. I encourage, as councils, I've said before, we absolutely must follow evidence-based and best practices to work ourselves out of this mess. I used to live paycheck to paycheck, and I had to make every dollar count, I know that homelessness is beyond our city's financial capabilities to solve, so we need to make every city dollar count. So that is what I'm looking forward to working on. The only good news that I see at this point is that when the homeless became visible, homelessness itself became visible, and so I believe that we have had our wake-up call now, and that we recognize that we must make this our top priority moving forward, and I look forward to continuing to meet with business owners, community partners, to meet with folks who are genuinely invested in moving the ball forward, and I look forward to creative solutions, whether it's private-based or publicly-based, I'm very interested in finding solutions that are cost-effective for all of us, and I feel that my colleagues here on council want to do the same thing, so I for one feel ready and looking forward to the future, I don't want us to spend any more time looking backward, it's time to look forward.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kaiser?
Thank you. I think I've thought a lot about this issue, about homelessness, over the last month since we've last convened as a council, we've received a lot of emails and phone calls from people who are very concerned on both, both sides of the issue, I guess you could say, it is not a simple problem, and it won't, it won't have a simple solution, I think it's so much more complex than the general public even realizes, I think, too, the general public is looking to the city for us to do something, obviously, but I think that our capacity as a city to completely solve this and make it go away is nearly impossible, I think it's going to require partnerships, it's going to require lobbying of other government bodies besides the city, I guess this is just my call out to the general public that this is a state issue, it's a national issue, I would love to see some things done at the county level, for the county, Marion and Polk counties to be more involved in this issue than they, than they have been and are currently, I would love for our state representatives and senators to become more involved, I'd love for the state legislature to actually make this a priority, from everything I've read, it's not during the short session, Washington's heading into a short session, they have made this a priority, California's heading into their session, they've made this a priority, where is Oregon? And I guess I'll just say that publicly, where is Oregon? Where is our legislature on this when it impacts nearly every community within the state? So I think for, I guess, keep contacting us, yes, but know that we as a city are doing everything that we can, everything that we feel is good, and we're acting in good faith on those things, but it's going to require more than us, and I hope everyone here tonight that is hoping to testify is also planning to show up to the short session and testify at the legislature, is planning to lobby them, is planning to go to Marion County Commissioner meeting, Polk County Commissioners meeting, and do the same thing, because I think we need to realize this problem is a regional thing, it doesn't affect just the city of Salem within our city of Salem limits, and we need to make sure that that is a common understanding, if we're actually going to make any movement in headway on this issue.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Manager. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sites echoing what everyone else has said specifically about with the homeless community, again, this is not only a city problem, like this is a county problem, it's also a state problem, it's national problem as well, I mean, the homeless community did not occur overnight, it happened, and it's worsened over time, and we see it now, we see it more visible, it's, you could see the desperation, you hear the desperation, all the emails and phone calls, I'm sure the other city counselors have received as well, the mayor as well, in terms of what people's stories are, what they're, what they're going through, what they're stressing about, like that has been an ongoing issue, and especially over the last month or so, since we've been out, we've been hearing it even more about what's going on, especially when it's getting colder, it's getting wet, people are being impacted, their health is being impacted, and one thing I hope that as we move forward, especially with this year and ongoing, that thinking about who we have on the street for the homeless community, I mean, even on the streets, they're still our residents, they're Salem residents, they're Marion County residents, they're state residents within Oregon, and, you know, carrying that lens, knowing that these are our people that are suffering on the street, we need to make sure that when we're making decisions, that not only are we at the table, but we have the other individuals who make decisions at the table with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Just a minute. Counselor, or Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, I'd like to give a quick update to council and to thank some people, first, on the cleanup of the sidewalks in the downtown, the city contracted with a trained licensed contractor to clean some areas of concentrated solid waste, that work was done Thursday and Friday, and I'd like to thank Nicole Oats and the Housing Authority staff for being down there before the cleanup occurred, to provide outreach to individuals on the sidewalks, to try to explain what was happening, and to try to connect them with services, and also thanks to Deputy Chief Miller and our police officers for taking a patient and respectful approach to individuals who had to move for the cleanup to occur. Also, on the search for temporary shelter buildings, that search is ongoing and continues, I understand the frustrations of council, and we've been working very hard in partnership with Arches to overcome that setback, we're running into obstacles, there's a limited supply of buildings, some owners are unwilling to lease without a long-term commitment, actually most owners, and building conditions, we had a small fire, there was a small fire yesterday morning at the Union Gospel Mission, which was a reminder of the importance to pay attention to life safety and fire code issues as we, as we consider buildings that are suitable for short-term shelter use. I also want to thank our existing shelter providers, I know it's anecdotal, but on Thursday night, UGM took in 12 individuals from the sidewalks, the sidewalks that have been areas of concern for our community, and I want to thank the Union Gospel Mission for that. Also, on tonight's agenda, I have added a recommendation to allow, if council chooses to allow the expansion of an existing women's shelter by declaring an emergency, so that will help our community add capacity to take care of those who need shelter, and also a reminder that the warming center network is ready to activate when the weather drops below the thresholds that activate that network of sites, shelter sites, so, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Manager. Alrighty, we will move on then to proclamations. Benny Williams, who is president of the Salem Kaiser NAACP. This is Benny Williams, he's president of the NAACP here in Salem area, whereas January 20th, 2020, is celebrated nationally and by the city of Salem as the observance of the birthday of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Dr. King is recognized as a leader in the movement to establish civil and human rights for all people, and whereas Dr. King focused on building peaceful communities based upon equality and justice, and whereas the city of Salem has reaffirmed the personal liberties of its residents and does not tolerate any violation of their civil and human rights, and whereas the celebration of the life of Dr. King helps honor those who contributed to Salem's diverse history and culture, and whereas the recognition and study of Dr. King's life and work helps assure a rich and diverse community future, now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the city of Salem, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the day of January 20th, 2020, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., day of recognition, and urge all residents to reflect and learn about his life's work, so that the community will continue to uphold and respect the civil and human rights of every individual. And I've invited Benny up to talk with you just a minute about some of the activities underway as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Bennett, City Manager Steve Powers, to the city council, thank you all for giving me an opportunity of coming forward and accepting this proclamation on the part of the Salem Kaiser branch of the NAACP. Dr. King's birthday, and I'll just take a few minutes, if I could, to share with you, Dr. King's birthday, that's honored, that's acknowledged, on the third Monday of the month of January, every year, is a federal holiday, it's one of 10 federal holidays on the calendar. I'd like for us to just think in terms of the significance of this, and ask us to think even more intimately about the significance of it. So, when you have 10 federal holidays, four of which are named after individuals, Dr. Martin Luther King, President's Day, which honors President Lincoln and Washington, Columbus Day, and Christmas, and for any and all of us, whether you are Christian or not, Christmas is honoring a man, Jesus Christ. So what I would say to us tonight, as we look forward to, a week from today, the Salem Kaiser branch of the NAACP is hosting a work service, in-service day on next Monday, I'd like to invite all of us that's here, I'd like for you to spread the word, we're gonna, we have this information on our social media, we have it on our website, at, from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock, next Monday, at McKay High School, we're gonna have a speaker to talk to the significance of Dr. King's life, but more, as importantly, is what his life was all about, and so we're having what we're calling an in-service, several hours of in-service time, and in fact, I just wanted to point out to you in the, in the publication that's on our website, the intent is the memory of Dr. Martin Luther King and a day of service to commemorate it. Our plans is to have sessions allowing the public to come in and get mental health information, housing information, we're gonna have free healthcare screenings, we're looking to have informational employment opportunities, this year of 2020 is an election year, and it's a very critical election year at all levels, as we stand here and sit here in this city council, from a local level, to the state level, to the federal level, elections will be had this year, and I believe, as oftentimes we say, a particular election year is critical, I believe all of us here, for one, in one regard to another, can establish or can believe that this is a critical year. This is a critical year for us to have a collective understanding of the very issues that started out this city council meeting, homelessness is not unique to Salem, it's not unique to Portland, it's not unique to Oregon, it's a, it's a state and countrywide issue that should not be. This country is rich enough, powerful enough, and has enough assets to rectify this situation, and frankly, it's one in which is part of the core of what Dr. King's life was about, and that was taking care of all of us, we are our brothers' keepers, and the significance of this year is one in which collectively, we have to make a decision, whether we're gonna dismiss part of our society, part of our community, or we're gonna understand that we have the capacity to help each and every one of us. Nobody, I don't believe there's anyone on the street that wants to be homeless, but they're homeless and helpless because they don't know where to reach out to, and there's, there's not enough resources reaching out to them. So I would just encourage us, join us next Monday for our recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday, but let's all of us, on a day-to-day basis, understand that we can contribute to improving the lot of all of us. It is possible, but it has to be a commitment, and it has to be a steadfast commitment, it can't be one that's simply socially acceptable for the moment, and so I would just encourage us, and I don't want to take any more time than say this, thank you, Mayor, for honoring Dr. King, to the city manager, and to the city council, and to all of us as citizens of this community, let's look out for one another, and we can do a better job of doing just that. Thank you.
And then sadly, second proclamation, whereas the Honorable Mike Swaim, who served as Mayor of the city of Salem from January 1997 to December of 2002, passed away on December 17th, 2019, and whereas Mayor Swaim was a respected leader in the community for decades, and was committed to improving the lives of Salemites, and whereas, as a Southern California transplant, Mayor Swaim was unwavering in his support for managed growth in Salem, and whereas Mayor Swaim led numerous community initiatives he valued greatly, including development of the Salem Convention Center, preservation of Opal Creek, founding and development of Marion Square Skateboard Park, development of Salem Riverfront Park, creation of the Salem Outreach Shelter, founding of Salem Self-Help Housing, and co-founding the Salem Memorial Peace Lecture Committee, and whereas Mayor Swaim also helped create the Salem Peace Plaza and Peace Wall, supported LGBTQ community, and promoted Salem Gay Pride Day, was founder of the Community Coalition for Affirmative Action, and was a founding member and treasurer of the Dorothy Patch Nellie Thompson Scholarship Fund, and whereas Mayor Swaim devoted himself to always doing his best on behalf of his constituency, and remained true to his core values, now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the city of Salem, do hereby proclaim January 25th, 2020, as Mike Swaim Day in Salem, and encourage residents to honor Mayor Swaim's passing, as well as to recognize his legacy as a caring and hard-working role model in our community. All city of Salem flags will be lowered on January 24th, 2020, in Mayor Swaim's honor, and I urge all residents to lower their flags as well, dated this 13th day of June, 2020. Okay, it's time for public comment, I'll remind you, each person has three minutes, at two minutes, the yellow light will go on, that means you have one minute left, when the red light goes on, I'll ask you to please stop speaking, so, or you can stop speaking, you have your choice, either I can ask, or you can voluntarily go for it, and we'll just move on through this, so I'm gonna invite up Karen Purdom, Curtis Grubbs, and Anthony Stevens, you can kind of line up, and we'll just move right along. Karen?
Hi, thank you. I've been practicing this, and I have to talk really fast to get through everything I want to say, so, my name's Karen Purdom, I live at 2548 Rose Garden Street Northeast in the Cornerstone Apartment Complex, 97301, I'm glad that everybody's on the same page about the homeless, getting them help, I heard the mayor on the OPB radio on Friday speaking about declaring an emergency, and I think that is a great idea, because if it was declared an emergency, FEMA would deploy, and I, I don't quote, I'm not guaranteeing that, but they have showers, toilets, laundromats on trailers already set up for natural disasters, and if we could get them to bring that stuff in, to set up a camp for the people, I think that would be what we need to do, and I'm just gonna speak as though everybody agrees that we're gonna have a camp, so, within 36 hours of having the camp open, everyone would have to report to the central station for a wristband with barcode to be identified to get in and out of the camp, and at that time, they would be made an appointment to see a counselor, to get jobs, if they need to get treatment for drugs, send them to treatment, you know, whatever they need, to get a hand up, and the only exemptions from that would be-- And the only exemptions from that would be veterans of armed services, and, and if a person is living homeless, is a lifestyle, offer to buy him a train ticket out of town. And the other part, the other part with the bracelet would be to identi, so people wouldn't be coming here when they heard people were going to be camping, basically, is that. To keep it, the riffraff out. And, and I would say, what you can do immediately for the people right now is open up the restrooms downtown in Riverfront Park, so people have a place to go to the bathroom and get a drink of water. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, thank you for thinking about this. Curtis, followed by Anthony, followed by Dana Bucktavine. Thank you.
Good evening, dear, dear Mayor, dear Honorable Mayor Bennett and Counselor. My name is Curtis Grubbs, I am from Ward Two. I was a former Mayor of the City of Wilhelmina. I would like to address something that, that has been, been working very, that you guys have been working very hard to solve, is the homeless problem downtown. I would like to suggest we try to move them to the old Kmart building, or find a place that we could set up tents or provide housing, and to be able to help with their needs in one central location. The homeless, homeless need our help. During the Great Depressions, we had poor farms in lots of communities, and my grandparents were in one. Yes, we have, have a problem, and, and the members of this great community are doing what they can with the resources that they have available. Also, the homeless, also by moving the homeless, the business owners will be, be able to meet their needs better, and it will clean things up. I will bring, it will bring more shopping to the downtown area like the good old days. There was a saying in the business I was in, we, we, a problem is not a problem, it's an opportunity for, for coming up to find a creative solution for it, and I am more than willing to help serve and do whatever I can. Thank you, Mayor Bennett and Counselors.
Thank you very much, Curtis. Anthony, followed by Dana Bucktavine, followed by Pamela Lyons Nelson.
Hi, my name's Anthony, I'm one of the, I'm actually one of the homeless that is living downtown. I was at Arches, I actually spoke with you, Mr. Mayor. We're just wanting to help you guys, help in any way we can with getting us out of there, because we know we're an eyesore, we know it is what it is. We will gladly help in any way that we can. Okay, so getting us out of there, I mean, if you've noticed, we clean up after ourselves also. We cleaned up after ourselves at Arches, at the Capitol Mall, everywhere else we've gone, we've cleaned up, we've had less interaction with police, we've had, we have been trying to work with you guys, and we continue to try to work with everyone. The businesses, I've actually personally spoken with some of the businesses, trying to get us out of there and open areas where we can live, live and leave the downtown area. The reason we're all downtown is because everything is centralized, all of the assistance that we need, Arches, the Veterans Assistance, HOPE, all of it's downtown. So the ones that can't travel and walk or ride a bike from West Salem to here, stay So I'm just, I'm here to say that, any plan you guys come up with, we're, we're willing to help, we're willing to do what we need to do to help with the transition, the move, whatever you guys need, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony, very much. Dana Bucktavine, Pamela Lyons Nelson, and Lanell Wilcox.
I'm Dana Bucktavine, 401 Center Street Northeast. Thank you, Mayor Bennett and Counselors, for all you've done to date, I certainly applaud your efforts so far. I'm not gonna recount communications I have previously put in my emails regarding the situation in the core downtown, however, I do applaud that you're continuing to look for other opportunities, and encourage that we continue to do so, and as we look for those alternative sheltering opportunities, we should also keep in mind that despite claims to the contrary, there are folks out there who do not want shelter in an organized manner, and that we need to ensure that we provide appropriate tool for our police and other social services to ensure that folks get off the street and into the shelter as necessary or to some other location, heaven forbid if it's a designated camping location, but that might be an alternative as well. I do applaud the thought process about the restrooms being open, the shopping centers' restrooms are open only about 10 hours a day, and the alcoves are open 24. We do claim both. Thank you for your ultimate support.
Thank you, Dana. Counselor Lewis?
Thanks, Dana, for coming down, and also for your participation in the Downtown Advisory Board, which I think is extremely important. My question, I'm just curious, how long have you been the manager of the Salem Center Mall?
I've been at Salem Center since February 2005. Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you. Pamela, followed by Lanell, and then Becky Beaman? God, that's, I knew I would get it wrong. That A and R look alike, I'm sorry. Okay, Pamela.
Pamela Lyons Nelson, Ward One. I'm here on my own behalf tonight, because I have come from last night at Church of the Park, where it was the second time I've been involved in an incident where someone's feet are so badly damaged from being left out in the cold. The other incident was a man who, over the Christmas break, spent three days under a tarp, under a tree, along D Street, on the old state hospital grounds. He couldn't walk, he couldn't move, because he couldn't stand up, and people left him there. People left him there for three days. The neighbors left him there. The people passing dropped by, left him there. This is just unacceptable. We each have something we can do. What I want to do is say, let's prioritize some things that sound quick and easy, and I understand they aren't, but they're sure quicker and easier than a lot of the things that we've been going for, and that is get toilets. Get toilets on street corners like they have in Copenhagen, like they have in Lisbon, like they have in, I don't know how many cities in Italy, like they have in France. Get toilets, portable toilets, public toilets on the street corners where people can actually use, Jameson Park in Portland has one, on a street corner. We need, we need those, we need places for property. We got so, so busy trying to figure out where to put people that we forgot that one of the big things is that people don't want to go, don't want to be separated from their property. We need more pods, maybe, I don't know what they need, but those are the things we can go out and buy or rent and ease this situation. And the third thing is, we sort of dropped car camping, and I was glad to see that it's on the agenda tonight. We still haven't found resources for that, but I don't know, it's been a very difficult month, maybe there's just so much people can research in that month, but I want to see that addressed. Will these things solve the problem? No, they'll ease the suffering, they'll ease the suffering, but we have to ease the suffering. We have to ease the suffering so people are able to do, excuse me, to do anything else. People shouldn't be losing their toes or losing their feet, because we couldn't come up with problems. So that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Lanell, then Becky Beaman, and Jean Hendren.
Hi, my name is Lanell, and I now work at Safe Sleep United. So talking about that, but also homelessness, homelessness beyond that. Safe Sleep is a women's shelter, they're open from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. First come, first served, and they currently are zoned for 10 beds. We have about 15 ladies who are coming regularly. We're seeing holes in the system, just like all the other warming centers are, we're seeing people who really need more mental health assistance, more nursing home assistance, more assisted living assistance than we can really adequately provide at a, at a warming center. But we're seeing just people who are basically drenched, cold, wet, soaked through from the elements, and we have to figure out which people we're turning away, because we have about 15 people coming regularly, and we only have 10 beds. We can hold 17 to 19 people, so we strongly support the recommendation to increase our capacity as an emergency resolution, but beyond that, it's really needing that in other places, being able to waive current zoning, so that other buildings that might be able to hold people, to have a place to be, could also have a place and not have our zoning rules get in the way when we have such a crisis. We're also seeing the results of the unintended consequences of the camping ban, being just, when you can't even have a tent to cover you up, even a pup tent, I understand we don't want huge structures, but when you can't even have a little pup tent, people are in crisis because there's no shelter, so of course they're gonna go under awnings to just get some basic protection. And we're getting ladies coming in, just drenched, ladies who've come from downtown, but we, at least there's a lady shelter now they can go to, so being able to have more places that people can go where the zoning laws aren't going to get in the way of just easing suffering, like Pamela said. And we're also, just kind of as a side note, we're seeing just more reasons why the camping ban and the property bans have more unintended consequences than I ever realized, when you have people who can't go somewhere to do the very things we want them to do to move forward, because they're risking losing their stuff if they leave it, or lugging their stuff if they don't leave it. The property ban has more negative consequences than I ever imagined, and I hope that the city will do something about lockers, but also taking care of, in other words, other people's words to heart, we're trying to connect more with, with county, and Safe Sleep actually has an amazing group of volunteers, and some of them actually work at legislative offices, so we're getting some connections to be able to also look at some of the state level things that we might be able to advocate there while also. So thanks.
Thank you. And as you mentioned, Lanell, we will be passing, I think, this evening, an emergency declaration to add to the number of beds you have available at Safe Sleep, yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Vanessa.
Oh, that's quite all right, Mayor. Thank you so much for volunteering at Safe Sleep. I toured Safe Sleep, I was very impressed. I've talked with the outgoing Executive Director and the incoming Executive Directors at United Way, and I'm really impressed with their level of organization and how quickly they were able to find a space, and I'm certainly supportive of making the zoning changes necessary. My question for you is, how are these women finding their way to your shelter? Are they finding it out through word of mouth? Are they walking from downtown? And do you think something like a mobile response unit could help transport women, especially women who may be struggling with mental illness, or disabilities, or addiction, do you think that would be helpful in picking up and transporting women directly to that shelter?
So of course, transportation would always be a plus, but currently, people are hearing about us from Facebook, from newspaper articles, PCC has referred ladies to us, we've had some ladies delivered to our doorstep by the Police Department, but it shows the holes in the system. One lady was delivered to our door wearing a hazmat suit and nothing else. One woman was 87 years old, sleeping in the PGE Building, which I don't even know where you'd sleep there, and she was delivered with just her clothes and no coat, no nothing, no blankets, drenched. So of course, and some people are walking from downtown, we have some ladies who were camping at Arches, some ladies who were camping, you know, under the storefronts, awnings, because there's shelter there, and you can't even have a tent now. So people are walking, and then you have 15 people at your door, and you can let 10 in. I'd love any of you to come figure out which five you're gonna send away. But no matter what the capacity is, we're always gonna have that problem, you're always gonna have somebody who shows up that's more than what you're allowed to have. So the transportation would be great, but we're one night, we're a Band-Aid. And, and even our, even though our volunteers are great and have so many skills, it's like we're already getting some ladies who are connecting more to services than they had been, two ladies might actually get housing because of some of the volunteers that we have. But if we don't have more capacity beyond Safe Sleep, where there's other places where people can go, where zoning laws aren't gonna get in the way of an emergency, so that, you know, the transportation is great, but we only are gonna have 17 to 19 beds if it increases, and there's way more people who are in crisis who are gonna be needing a place to go.
Thank you. Thank you. Becky Beaman? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you, I just have one question, thanks Lanell. Does Safe Sleep allow women to come in who are under the influence or intoxicated?
Yep, no barrier. If your behavior inside isn't going to work, then we might, we might have to have a conversation, but drugs, no barrier.
Okay, thank you.
And we take pets.
Counselor Lewis?
Thanks, Lanell, for coming. The 15 people that show up every night, when you have to turn people away, do you just say, sorry, no room at the inn, or do you have options for them to at least look into?
So that's an ongoing work in progress. We try to, we, we thought first come, first served would be very fair. It turns out that that creates unintended consequences, where if people have things to move forward in the daytime, they're the ones leaving and going and doing the very things we want them to do. And then they're getting back late, whereas some people might be too scared to risk losing their place, so they're staying there all day. So on a first come, first served, we're really struggling, like who, who gets to be the first come if you've stayed there all day and someone else has gone and done the things that are gonna move them forward, but now they're here later than someone else. So we're kind of doing first come, first served, applying triage as well, and then we're also connecting with Simanca House and asking them about, you know, when, is it possible for you to use your overflow even when it's not 32 degrees? So we're starting to have a conversation, I don't know where that'll go, trying to do the same thing with the Salvation Army, and also having really hard conversations with the ladies, saying, you know, we have, we're rated for 10 beds, and we're getting at least 15 people every day, where we're turning some people away. So we're having the conversation of, if you have any other options, can you like switch it up every now and then? If you have somebody who can lend you a sofa every now and then, please take it. If you can get into Simanca House or Salvation Army, and we give the information for that, with some ladies I've called to see if there's beds at other places, because that would be, you'd have a bed guaranteed. With us, our place, it's just night to night, you're seeing if you're going to have a bed. Seeing if some ladies have some income, so if every now and then you used to get a motel, so every now and then pool your resources and get a motel together, so that we hopefully will have different, you know, the 15 who are coming will have a different tent every night, hopefully if people can use some other resources, but a lot of people don't have those resources. Last night, we had a girl come in at 2:30 in the morning, drenched, and she just had her clothes on her back, and she was running away from her boyfriend who beat her up. So are you gonna send that girl away?
Okay, thank you very much. Becky Beaman, followed by Jean Hendren and Barbie Taylor.
Becky Beaman, I'm in Ward Seven. I want to thank you all, especially Counselors Hoy, Nordike, and Anderson, for the compassion you have shown in working on Salem's homelessness issues. I know these issues do not be addressed successfully in a single council action, but will require sustained action over the course of time at many levels. Thank you for engaging in this effort. Car camping. Car campers may be low-hanging fruit that provides a win in the struggle we're in. With respect to car camping, I have three things to share, and I'm gonna talk to you, Counselors, as if you were doing the work yourselves. First, this is the first time I have seen Salem address where we do want homeless people instead of simply approaching it from where we don't want them, and I think that's a huge step. And I think that's a huge step. Recognize it and pat yourselves on the back. I beg you to listen to the car campers themselves and provide them with what they say they need. And it will include bathroom facilities and garbage service. You're getting a lot of garbage in the porta-potties because they don't have garbage service. That'll help. If you want success, please provide these things. Secondly, please listen to the organizations and agencies that have hosted car campers. They probably know more about this subject than city staff know. I recommend you ask for input from the church at the park, who is hosting car camping now, and Salem Friends Church, who hosted car camping for a while and will not do it again. They can help you plan how to address problems that are likely to arise so that everything isn't a crisis when it pops up. And some of these problems might best be addressed in partnership with nonprofits, such as churches, who may have volunteers who can help. Thirdly, I had intended to ask you to address the more vulnerable car campers first, and I had in mind homeless families living in their cars, schoolchildren living in their cars. But I've been told it may be difficult to get homeless families to come forward because they fear the authorities will take the children away from them. If you really want to help these people, you'll need them to trust you, and you might be unable to assure them that their family is safe if they come forward. So, maybe the vulnerable communities are not the right place to start unless you consider the public-private partnership that was discussed in written testimony from Lynette Wilcox. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your comments. I really appreciate them. And just so you know, I don't intend, I intend to make a motion tonight to implement this, and it would not be something that the city would run. It would be in partnership with nonprofits and others, so just so you know.
Okay. Thank you. Jean Hendren, followed by Barbie Taylor, followed by Jean Pfeifer.
I spent most of the day yesterday listening to this man. Took three hours for a doctor at Salem Hospital to even pain medication. This is the man who lost his leg because he was laying in wet and cold outside a McDonald's, unable to get himself shelter. Did you get the point? Mr. Mayor, you have unleashed a monstrous month of pain and suffering that you probably could not conceive of. I have said that I would stay down here and work with these people until the tent ban is lifted. But I'll tell you what, since I can't go to my classes at Portland State University again until next year because I've missed too many classes now, if you lift that tent ban and just simply give these people shelter first, I will stay down here and help sort through these things with you. I have a lot of ideas about what kind of homeless shelters would be appropriate for almost any kind of person who is suffering from poverty or mental illness, et cetera, and so forth. And I have to say, one of the things that I have run across over and over and over again in this town is a lack of communication. It happens on the state level. It happens on the city level. It happens at the sheriff's office. We are not listening to each other. I have to repeat myself at least six times before somebody understands what I'm saying, and that's if they give me the opportunity to do so, because usually they're trying to talk over me. In 1980, I was hit head-on by a semi. Not my fault. I had a near-death experience. I realized that if I was going to come back to life, I had to give up what I had seen there. But the one thing that I came back, and I tried to put it in words so that I would never lose it for the rest of my life, the one thing that I could put in words was, "In heaven, there are no misunderstandings. We don't judge people by their behaviors. We judge them by their needs and their intentions." I have never seen anything so horrific in my 70 years of existence in this country. What would you like me to do? Anybody?
Counselor Lewis.
You know, I'll be clear. I believe there's a true effort by many people in this city to deal with the homeless issue. In fact, there is one gentleman sitting in this audience that is the community action director. I would encourage you to talk to him and ask him what you can do to help his organization fulfill their goal.
I have been talking to a lot of people, and I'm certainly willing to talk to anybody who's willing to talk to me. I have absolutely no problem with that at all. Number one.
Great. Thank you very much.
Answer the phone.
Okay. Barbie Taylor.
Hi, I'm Barbie Taylor. I own a house on Summer Street, walking distance from downtown. I am just general public. I don't have any solutions, unfortunately, but I would think you three should know that we have opinions and we aren't happy. It's not the state, and not the federal government, and not the county that enacted the camping ban. You all did that. You did it. We're not confused. It was you guys that voted and enacted the camping ban, and it has caused undue misery, and you are all responsible. And we're angry. We're not a little bit angry. If we own a business, we're angry. If we see suffering, we're angry, and we hold you responsible. So, I'm okay if y'all want to go talk to the state, and I'd love it, really, if you enacted a state of emergency and got some help for these people who we do go help. We feed these people. They are humans, and they are suffering in a way that I don't think you could possibly understand unless you're out there at 10 o'clock at night offering hot coffee to someone who is soaking wet with no option for shelter because you took it away from them. You took their little tiny bit of prevention from rain and wet away from them with no option, and we are mad. Sorry, I wasn't going to get emotional. It's inhumane. It was designed to punish the already hopeless people who are suffering immeasurably, and we hold you responsible. You're disorganized, and you are reckless. And really, asking the churches to bear the whole entire effort to shelter people is unacceptable. You should be providing some shelter. It is not all on the churches. We're helping. We will do what we can. We are doing it, but we should not have to burden the whole entire weight of the homeless population because of this reckless decision that you have made.
Thank you. Jean Pfeifer and Angel Bellamore.
Hi, good evening, and I want to say that I'm glad to be here in front of all you honorable folks in the city. I kind of made a little impromptu thing here. So, I just wanted to touch base on a couple of things. The vehicle camping thing, I had mentioned, this is the fourth time that I've come and spoken before, you folks, about the horrors that I had to live through. I'm one of the lucky ones who got H-Rap to take care of me, put me in a home. When I see those people out there, I wish I could let them into my place, but I can't. I can't let one of them even come take a shower or sleep there because I would be endangering my home now. I've said before that I know at least 10 people that live in their vehicles. Most of these people are probably over there by the church at the park at this time, and I'm glad that they have that capability to be there. But there's a lot more of them, people I don't know. And I've seen people, old men, walking their stuff in carts and dragging their wheelchair behind them, young ladies crying near stores because they don't know what to do, their boyfriend with a big bag of stuff packed into a tarp, which he'll probably use as something to cover up with at night. It's just, it's just really sad. Going to touch base on the fact that you guys need to continue funding the H-Rap program, which is basically the Housing First program, internationally known as Housing First. And this is versus the sweeps, the contractors that you guys are hiring, the amount of salaries you're paying city employees to do all this work out there. It'd be better to house them. You just look up the research that's been done. And in terms of the vehicle camping, folks, pick an area, pick a park, pick something. Can't be that hard. All they need is sanitation and where to throw garbage.
Thanks, Angel.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Jean Pfeifer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak. I'm from Silverton.
Introduce yourself. Would you introduce yourself?
And I participate a lot in Salem. I consider Salem Silverton Metro Park of Salem, just like Woodburn or Dallas, Oregon. One thing I'm really big on is sustainability, true sustainability. So, I've been aware of the homeless problem for many years. I guess I knew one in Silverton 15 years. He just recently died, and two years before he died, I was involved with him quite a bit. Called me up. I take his calls. I take him to movies, and I offered him a place where he could have a bath, and offered to give him another place where he could bathe. He was two years without a bath when he died. So, these are conditions that are terrible. This guy decided to live that way. Don't get me wrong. I'm just pointing out my relationship with that. I feel that what we're dealing with is in three phases. Right now, we have a phase where we have a bunch of homeless that need a place to be. I was down at Arches when the police were ushering them out one day, and then the second day I was there as well, in the morning, just to visualize. And I don't think the police really particularly liked being there because they knew that people didn't have any place to go to. No, they didn't know where to go, and that was a bad part. But let me emphasize the rest of it. So, most of the people are talking about right now, it's become very obvious that we need to take care of things now. But we've got to be more phases to this. The second phase is one that I've introduced, which is trying to use the facility of Hillcrest to be able to bring the homeless and have them enroll into a program which would be very disciplined. They want to be there, maybe six months, maybe 12 months, wherever. They would get evaluated for all their problems, physical, medical, drugs, whatever they be. And we find that 60% of them are able to be at work, and they say we need to have work. We've talked about people in the industry that takes care of people that have these kind of problems with drugs, and we know that these people can be fixed. But we need to go from the step that takes care of them beyond that. There's 60% that can get work. There's 40% that can't, probably, will not be able to make it in the program. So, the step, the problem after that would be a step up. What do they do once they graduate? So, I'm proposing a step-up plan where we have facilities, like congregant housing, which may be as little as under $40,000 a door. So, these are things that really need the helps on. I would appreciate help from the council relative to what we're trying to accomplish at Hillcrest. We're calling it Hopecrest, and it can serve as many as 500 people. But it'll take time to get up to that stage. So, this is what's going on right now, and thanks very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. I've been following the Hopecrest project with great interest. Can you tell us a little bit more about, does the property have access to basic utilities? For example, water, energy? Because as I understand it, to do a project like that, you would need water rights and all the other things that you would need to run a facility. Is that an issue for the Hopecrest project?
Well, first of all, there's 207,000 square feet of facilities, buildings, and 44.6 acres of property. It's very good if we wanted to have people in a tents or if they want to be in the building. It has all of the amenities one would want, dormitories, classrooms, gymnasiums, swimming pool, outside activities. The thing you mentioned, there was a rumor that somebody started about the well was not active or not part of the property. This is not true. We've thoroughly investigated that. The representative realtor says it's definitely with the property. We want to find out if everything's working well with it, but that's something that can fix for a nominal price. The thing that we're working with to make this workable is that we have no intention to change the occupancy of the facility or to make a zone change. That being the case, code says we don't have to bring the facility up to current code if that's the case. However, we want to do some things that are just reasonable. Maybe there's some ramping that we should do. We need it definitely fixed. There's an elevator, it needs to be fixed, things like that, that we want to make productive for the people to use. It will be a facility strictly, when we talk in terms of utilities over there. In fact, I want to make a statement. I didn't have much time to say all of this, but...
Well, we're not going to have it now either.
This is about utilities.
About the water. About the water. About the water. I want to understand the water.
Oh, the water is fine. We've got to test, we have to test the...
Ms. Rutherford, what situation with the water out there?
Our understanding from when we explored this through the Housing Authority is that the well is not functioning and serving the property and that those rights were sold as part of another transaction, and that there is a development project that is underway that is installing a water line at this time. But while it might have capacity to serve kind of a similar use on the site, it wouldn't have capacity for an increased use, and that any future redevelopment there would likely require a whole new watering.
The use of the water is ongoing. We've got it strictly from the, working with what the title would be with the Salem Realtor. There's not a problem with that. What I wanted to say is the facility has sat there for over two years at a 55-degree temperature, empty. Nobody's using it. Nobody's in it. We're talking about all, where we can put facilities. We have a disconnect between our state and the city about what we need. The building's sat in there, and we're not using it.
Okay. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Ken Adams.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, for bumping me up because my subject isn't the homeless, and I didn't really want to impose myself during that discussion because I do see it as a serious problem. But what I've been observing is another dangerous problem. And I live at 1695 Chamekada Street, which is the northwest corner of 17th and Chamekada. Saturday, January 4th, I was walking my dog across that street. When I started to cross the street, I noticed the car down at Court Street make a right turn and come northbound. I had plenty of room to cross the street and get across safely. When I looked up again, he was practically on top of me. I see this all the time. I have a perfect view, basically, of that intersection. A lot of times, people are trying to coerce pedestrians from not crossing the street. I see this all the time at my corner. I'm sure it happens at all, the rest of the corners on 17th. And it's something that's very dangerous, and I see a lot of drivers doing this, where they try to speed up to get through the intersection before you can cross in the crosswalk. And I've seen this way too often. So, I would like to say that something needs to be done. And I know that the police use 17th Street a lot because it's one of the few through-streets through Salem. And I would like to advise them to park in the Court Christian Church and just watch for this kind of behavior, especially early in the morning. This happened around 8:30 in the morning on a Saturday morning. But this happens way too often, and it's very dangerous. And Councilman Anderson was talking... And Councilman Anderson was talking about pedestrian deaths. And when we start saying, oh, it's just minor, it's not, because the speed limit along there is 30 miles an hour. And I've heard a couple of times, people say, well, they don't get tickets unless they're going at least 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. Well, at 40 miles an hour, that's a death sentence. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I live in that neighborhood generally.
Yeah, I know you do.
I know exactly what you're talking about, Ken. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much for coming down, Ken. And you know, I agree with you that this is an important issue, and if I'm recalling right, doesn't in front of your house on 17th, isn't there actually an island and a marked crosswalk going across 17th?
There is. And you know how many times the tree has been knocked down?
15.
Well, it's been knocked down twice. It's been hit a number of other times. Also, those little poles in front of the crosswalk on the south side have been knocked over numerous times. It happens almost every week.
And this is not the first time that you have complained, not complained, you have pointed out this fact to the council.
Well, this one spooked me a lot more than some of the other ones.
So I'm looking at the police chief and the deputy chief over there, and wondering maybe if we might want to do a little something there because I have heard many concerns about that particular intersection, not just from Ken, but from everybody.
Counselor Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming down, Mr. Adams. I think the last time I saw you...
I was walking across the street.
You were walking across the street at 17th and Court, and I was on my bike trying to get across the street there, which is, I have to take that intersection to get home. And it's not a fun one. I hear what you're saying, and you know, there's so many, so many people drive distracted these days. They're texting, they're paying attention to things other than driving. And frankly, I think 30 miles an hour is too much for that area, and I would hope that at some point, we can look at lowering that speed limit. And I just hope that everybody takes personal responsibility. I think enforcement is always a part of it. 30 years of enforcement here.
You have to change behavior, I think.
Counselor Kizer.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ken. And when you contacted me a week ago, a few days ago, and I did make contact with Chief Moore, and I think at that time, you were talking about adding some enforcement to that area, or at least to go kind of do what you're saying, just have somebody down there to look in. I used to drive through that intersection a lot, I know exactly where you're talking about. And I'm not sure what else we could do from, say, a public works perspective to improve it, but...
It's a different situation.
It is kind of, it's aggressive drivers and people just not paying attention, or I don't know, being aggressive towards pedestrians, which seems to be on the increase.
Well, that's the part that really scares me.
Counselor Lewis.
I appreciate your comments about enforcement because I believe that that's a crucial part of this. And one of the tools that I believe we have and are starting to implement is at intersections like that, if someone goes through a yellow light and is speeding up, then they can get a ticket for that. And it's just one way that we can observe, because we can't have a cop at every corner. But I'm a strong advocate of cameras because they catch the people that are violating the rules. And much better to punish those people directly than to push off on everyone because of the actions of some.
But it's kind of a concern of mine because I see this kind of behavior way too often, and maybe that's part of my reason for bringing this up, is I see this all the time. And one of the things, during the rainy season, these people are driving fast through the intersection, and people can't walk or ride their bikes across because they're going so fast.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, anyone else? Line up, and if you please introduce yourself and which word you're from.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is John Olivera. I owned Steel's Karate in Salem for 30 years, and I'm here to advocate for action, for caringness and compassion. Maybe some of you recall that in 2016 December, the karate school took in over 100 people for one week straight. The top count was 171 night, men, women, dogs. My anniversary was the following coming week. My wife insisted we go to seaside, and so we did, and I had to get them out, and you guys helped, and I really appreciate it. It was good, and things seemed to take a turn, and there was warming shelters that came out of that. I kept the women there for a couple of months. They could stay, they didn't have to go. I kept a couple of homeless men there working for me. I eventually asked them to leave. I knew it was not something I wanted to perpetuate. You know, community support was huge. City leaders spoke to me, the mayor and I spoke. The city seemed to then act. I understand that when the temperature drops, there's going to be more action. I understand that. Social media groups like the one Ms. Wilcox is part of, which is Free Hot Suit Mobile, gained strength. That movement seemed to start meeting more needs. So this year, I'm concerned for all of us, and not just the homeless. My sister owns a business at the Salem Center Mall. Eat my sweets. It's good. Only coffee place in the mall. She's afraid to park except on the top level. She pays for parking, $40 a month, and she can't park there. And honestly, you guys, I have so many stories because I spent a week with them. I went around town picking them up. Is there anything we can do similar to Eugene, Egan Worms Shelter? I noticed tonight Portland opened four more shelters and probably more. Did action happen because a private system opened the business and accepted every facet of providing basic needs for residents plus? Because I took a big screen down there with videos and popcorn and halftime bar and grill fed them, and man, they had it good for a week. And I understand all the problems they have, I understand that. It can't be cold, can't freeze death in Salem. And again, I'm not here to say, you know, you did this or you did this, I'm just saying that's what I did. I opened my karate school door. Please find dry, warm shelter for our citizens, one at a time, 100 at a time. The state of emergency could be productive and humane, and if I still was teaching karate in Salem, I would open it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks a lot.
I'm Lori Walker. I'm not here tonight. I'm in the Scan Neighborhood Association. I'm involved with the Homeless Coalition of Salem and Home Based Shelters of Salem. I'm not here to pass the buck or point the finger or blame anyone because I think, you know, there's some of us who have been doing this for many years now and are quite aware of the problems. There's others who are new and becoming more aware. I think that we're not going to solve any problems by passing the blame anywhere. I think that in Salem, we're all kind of new at this of trying to solve this situation, and I don't think the situation would be solved with a blame game. Think it's going to take a lot of collaboration from a lot of people. So I know that there are organizations and people ready and willing to step up and assist the city, whether it's in regards to an approved camping area or car camping. We would also need some kind of approval for separation of women and children, or children away from predators, or areas where it's just women and children, where there's not a combination of people. Many of us have been involved for five years or more as volunteers and advocates. Of course, then you have people at various organizations, the Gospel Mission, Hope Program, Northwest Human Services, Arches. Some of them have been involved for so long, and they're so well aware of what the needs are more than any of us. So if we can get some collaboration going between the city, the county, and state, we could accomplish a lot. So waivers are needed for approved car camping or approved camping areas. The items of the task force that the mayor's task force came up with for showers, the restrooms, showers have been added. Restrooms are still lacking, there aren't enough restrooms, there aren't any places for people to put their property. And I think we need to be asking why Marion County mental health is not on our streets. People need help right in the streets. A lot of them can't find their way down there. So there's so many issues that affect all of this that it's huge. The needs are huge, and the solutions are going to take a lot of work. So I'm not blaming any of you guys for any decisions. I'm sure we can come up with some positive outcomes, and it's all going to take some work and collaboration.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Kizer.
Thank you. Thank you, Lori. I just have a question, because you said you're with Home Based Shelters and a few other organizations. Has your group or groups reached out to the city manager or acting city managers over the last few weeks, offering assistance?
Not in the last few weeks.
Okay. All right.
We have in the last few years, yes.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just, I'm curious over the last month or so. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Hello. Hello. My name is Jeanette Gardner, and going to be a little bit on a different end of this here, Mayor and council members. First thing I sense, I'm going to, before I read what I wrote here, you guys are not fully emotionally invested to really, really get this. Because I do think the folks that are here about compassion are right in an immediacy. In other words, like, it's going to snow tomorrow night, pretty much like that. But I've lived here for 66 years. My parents used to go into Union Gospel Mission. We went down there many times as a child. Quite frankly, there always were the homeless and vagrants at that time, and there always has been, and quite frankly, there always will be in communities, because it's just the way it is. Anyway, I'm just telling you that, I'm going to read you apart. So I just don't want to see our community, they need to not be on those streets by that Salem Center Mall. I just, I've lived here my whole life. I used to go downtown on the bus, I came over that bridge. That is, it has nothing to do with compassion toward these folks. You can find a place, because there's blank buildings all over this place, and there are people that have money, and quite frankly, if you really want to, you all that are so concerned, you put them on your yard, you move them onto your property, and you ten, why was there 10 dump trucks loads of trash that was taken out of there? The folks need help and counsel to behave in a dignified and a community fair manner. And so I do see that. I came downtown recently, and I witnessed absolute filth and rags, and it stunk terribly. I saw heroin being shot right there by TJ Maxx. I was so scared, I could hardly get myself back over to my car. They had carts inside the store, which no one's going to want to shop in there. So there goes the prosperity of Salem as well, to give the money to help these folks. And so this is what I saw. So what I'm saying to you down to get down here, because I know the light's going to bleep, I humbly and firmly ask that you take all steps immediately to redo this weak situation, to take care of the loopholes, and finally and not least, I have the utmost compassion for these troubled homeless persons. They deserve food, water, and a way to be clean and productive and law-abiding. It is our problem to see that they're treated that way and yet not perpetuate this on our society. I saw an eight-year-old child down there by Salem Center in that business. Were they there at 10 o'clock at night? Because your curfew law says they can't be out on the street. They broke the law there, not protecting that child. And furthermore, they all had laptops, just like you have right there. They all had smartphones, I saw at least four or five smartphones, which I have pictures of, by the way, as well as laptops. How do they afford that? How do they pay for those plans? And yet they have to go to the restroom on the street? Anyway, I'm just going on my own heart here telling you all, I don't really like talking in front like this, but I'm doing it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Last sentence. I ask you to take steps immediately. We're all watching to see our elected government to do just what is needed, and we will not accept anything less. We're watching November 20.
I love our home.
Okay, let me move on then. Consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. The consent calendar includes the December 9, 2019 draft city council minutes. Item 3.3A, which is an amendment to the motor carrier safety assistance program in our governmental agreement with the...
No FIBA.
With the Oregon Department of Transportation. Item 3.3B, which is a recommendation on appointments and reappointments to the citizen budget committee, citizens advisory traffic commission, community police review board, downtown advisory board, Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Salem Planning Commission, and Salem Public Art Commission. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Okay, any discussion? Yes, Counselor.
Just briefly, I highly recommend folks to apply for your city boards and committees. If you would, anyone who is here tonight, who is here to provide comments on how we can do better, there are lots of ways to get involved and to make your voice heard and to rise through the ranks in leadership. I would love to see a greater diversity of voices in our city leadership, and that it all starts for me with our city boards and committees. I've served on four city boards and committees before I came here. Salem Youth Advisory Commission, the Police Review Board, Social Services Advisory Board, and Budget Committee. And all of these inform my perspective and make me a better counselor. And I recommend for folks, if you are interested in getting involved, this is one of the many ways that you can do so and help us move the needle. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we have a public hearing. Open the public hearing.
The city council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the planning administrator's decision approving a tentative phased subdivision review and class two adjustment for permit case number S U B 1908 and urban growth preliminary declaration modification case U G A 17-03 M O D 1 for property located at the 4,700 block of Battle Creek Road Southeast. The applicable criteria are S R C chapters 200.030D, 205.010D, and 250.005D2A. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue shall preclude appeal to the land use board of appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant's limited to 10 minutes. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes. Other interested parties are limited to three minutes, and the applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes.
All right, Olivia.
Good evening. My name's Olivia Glance. I'm a planner with the planning division. I would like to enter the staff report into the record in the presentation. Before you, you have a subdivision adjustment and a modification to an urban growth area preliminary declaration permit, U G A permit. The applicant has applied to subdivide 52.8 acres and a 209 lots, which is noted in your staff report as a lot change, it's a scrivenger error, so 209 lots, and then a class one adjustment to the minimum width for lot 89. And then amendment to the U G A permit that was previously approved, the subdivision does have several alternative tree standards that were reviewed to accommodate topography on the site and in order to preserve trees, such as meandering sidewalks. The U G A permit is, was to clarify, the amendment to the U G A permit was to clarify where the development would bring water to the site from. Many of the conditions of approval are duplicated and are already required, are already requirements of the U G A permit, and the subdivision was just needing to clarify the timing of those conditions for each phase. So we have the subject property, which is located on the northeast corner of Battle Creek and Reed Road. The property is, also has frontage along Kubler and Strong. So as you can see by the zoning map, the subject property is zone RA, which is residential agriculture, children green, and also zone PH was just public and private health services, which is shown in blue to the north. You can see the Hillcrest facility located there, and then to the west is the Fairview mixed-use area. That zone is the Fairview's mixed-use zone. The property is boarded by Boulevard, arterials, and a collector. So we have an aerial photo of the subject property. Again, you can see Hillcrest, the Fairview industrial area to the north, and then there's the... and then there's the Morningside Church to the east there. So, here we have a property, the layout of the subdivision is shown on the screen. The green area is a proposed park, which was previously granted tentative approval to be divided away from the property through a partition action earlier last year. So, I'm going to go through some of the street improvements. So, the improvements along Battle Creek there, they're shown in blue. And then there's some intersection improvements. So, as you can see, Battle Creek right now does not have sidewalks or street trees. So, improvements would be widening the lanes, sidewalks, street trees along Battle Creek, along the frontage of that property. And then the intersection, we would, it would be, there's a condition of approval to realign and construct the, reconstruct the intersection to include turn lanes through a pedestrian island crossing Battle Creek towards the park. And then street improvements along Reed Road shown in blue. Again, currently Reed Road doesn't have sidewalks or street trees. And the lanes, I don't believe the half-street doesn't include the full width. Widening along this section of the property would also be required as a half-street improvement with sidewalks and street trees and on-street parking for the park. And then the same story along Strong. So, the section in blue, shown in blue along Strong Road up there, again, would be increased in width, would have street trees and sidewalks for pedestrian access. So, staff recommends that you modify the planning administrator's decision to correct the scrivenger errors and approve the application. Do you have any questions?
We'll come back to you in just a few minutes. We'll have the applicant, Mark Rins. You're representing the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mark Rins. I'm with Multitec Engineering. We're representing the applicant for you tonight. I feel out of place. I don't usually talk from this side, so I'm looking at everybody differently tonight. Maybe that's the way to start-
Doing a good job.
-the new year. Yeah, I try to be- Trying to become more flexible and-
Yeah.
Now I do so. As, as usual, I'm privileged to bring before you a project that has a fair number of unique circumstances to it. Most of you are probably familiar with this part of town, since Kubler goes by there and I'm sure everybody drives on that. This property, 52 acres, then less the 7.35 acre park, 45 acres, give or take a little bit, that we're going to try to put 209 lots on. The density that we have, there's a little bit less than we would normally see achieving on a, on property in Salem, but it's predominantly driven by some of the unique circumstance we have. We have a lot of topography on this site. In fact, on the very top of this site, shared with this property and adjacent property to the east is where the proposed coal burn reservoir is supposed to go at some point in the future, of which we're, as some of the conditions note, we're participating in, in some TFA fees and stuff to help bring that into fruition in the future. But when we started this project with the park site coming out and then with, there's a, there's a fork, Pringle Creek that comes along the bottom part there next to Reed, the challenge of this was to figure out how to get street system to work on this site in order to be able to maintain the street grades without too many requests for alternative street standards and get across this site and get down to the other side and tie into, to Strong Road as well as provide access to all the adjoining properties that we, that we butt into and connect. So, we spent an awful lot of man hours, as did your staff, working back and forth since we started the application process on this property, which has been over a year, in trying to refine this design. And we provided multiple street profile designs for your staff to review and for the fire department to see, so everybody could see how we were trying to get up and across this. You know, the, the new pro-wig standards that, that the city has now that we, that we bring into subdivisions, where we, where we designing all of our intersections to achieve safe pedestrian crossings, creates a lot of havoc in these, in these steeper sites where there's a lot of topography, because as you approach an intersection, you can't exceed 5% in, in grade through there. 5% or 2% cross slope, depending on whether it's a stop-controlled intersection. So, you take in a site that has, has an average topography that's over 10%, and then at each of these intersections, you've got to create these flat spots. I'll call them flat, but in there, it really does create a lot of challenge for how to set these sites up. So, we spent a lot of time working with your staff to figure out how to make these street alignments work. And then complicated, this has a lot of trees on it. We're trying to figure out how to minimize the impact to trees in our grading process. So, it was quite, quite a challenge. And then a few other things, like there's no water available for this site, so we have to bring that in. So, a lot of the conditions that you see in here, they're, they show up more than once. They're duplicated because we established, broke this thing into segments. And that, and there's 11 segments in here in order to try to set up a, a way that when we build it, it would be built in pieces. So, we'd have a way that staff could view this and say, what kind of facilities have to be here for each of the different segments? So, you'll see some duplication in that and that there's same requirement for segment C, for instance, might be showing up a segment K and stuff. So, albeit there's 45 conditions, but they're not really 45 conditions. There's, there's quite a few duplicates that, that show up in there. So, given all the energy that we put into this site, we, we don't have any objection to the conditions that staff has set up. We're here tonight to, to hopefully be able to address any, any questions that, that counselor may have and any issues that you, that you'd like to explore further. We're not really sure where the call-up process worked, if there's, to be able to identify specifically what it was the council was, was looking for tonight. We know that the, the neighborhood association presented some testimony in writing tonight. And as you can see from the presentation from Olivia, pretty much all of the things that we're involved in that they brought up are going, are going to be addressed. The, the construction of pedestrian facilities along Battle Creek, along our frontage, along Reed Road, along our frontage, and Strong Road, on our frontage. And that'll help to make those facilities connect to other portions of the community. So, those things are getting done. They're set up to be done at different, with different segments and different phases of it, but they will get done improving that intersection with Reed. And Battle Creek is something we have to do relatively early in our process to help make that a more standardized intersection and improve that. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions that I can of, of any counselors right now.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you remind me about all of the major road improvements that are required? And during which part of the phasing will those occur? I, I just get really nervous when we have these phased developments with improved, promised improvements later. We kind of got burned early on in my council tenure and I just wanted some assurances about that.
I'm going to, I'm going to, unfortunately, I'm going to have to defer to Jeremy with my office. He's the project manager. He's going to be more able to identify specifically which, which sections are tied to, which segment.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Hey, I know, Glenn, your staffers.
Yeah.
Even better.
Coming a little early. This is Glenn Davis, Chief Development Engineer, Public Works. The, as you look through the conditions of approval, one thing we've learned from your experience in the past as well is in the old decisions, there would be a big list of requirements that wasn't specific to certain land areas. It was just kind of a vague list of requirements that we just kind of worked out over time. And that's what happened with some of the unnamed projects we want to talk about tonight. But, so this one, you'll see with each geographic location of the, with the segments, it is, it triggers a specific improvement. So, as they move forward, there would, nothing will get missed as we go through the whole process. So, for example, in the, in front of me, the, the first, the first phase is section E and that section E lists the intersection of Battle Creek and Reed as that reconstruction, that's a quite a large project, is the first thing to do, to bring some safety to that, that area. So, that, and then you'll see the, the different improvements coming with each segment to make sure that, that nothing gets dropped. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, Glenn, stay up and then I'll ask a question for Mark. So, it seems to me that this segment phasing that Counselor Hoy was talking about is also tied in with the 45 conditions, because you're, each segment, you're adding, you're being specific as to the conditions as opposed to one general condition that you'll improve sidewalks on all the roads. You go specific on each one.
Yes, this learns the lesson of the past.
Yes, okay, good, good. Now, I have a question or two for Mark. Thanks for coming down and I appreciate the effort on this. I ride my bikes the way I get in and out of town going southeast. So, I'm on my bike on all those roads a whole lot, so I understand the grades too. It's a lot easier coming into town than it is going out of town. So, if I'm looking at there, the park is, is within the red lines and it would be on Reed Road right there?
That's correct.
Okay, then you may or may not know this, but is, you know, this is 209 lots, which is a pretty big development. Is that being, is that serviced by public transportation? Does public transportation go on Battle Creek? Or if you can't answer, maybe the staff, I'll, I'll ask the staff then.
I would tell you it's likely that today there's no identified public transportation stops that are adjacent to this project.
Olivia, you can answer that question.
So, there is a condition of approval that they have to, that they would need to coordinate with chariots.
Okay, okay. Then I'm, I, I look through the plans carefully and there's talk, you know, I'm, I obviously missed it, but there's talk about pathways to direct to the park. And is, is that included in all the schematic drawings you have here?
There, there, there are, on our site plan shows the proposed public connections. And in fact, Olivia did have a slide-up that showed, that had, where there was some colored, that made it easier to see some of, too fast. So, you can see the green-
The green is it? Okay, great.
Yeah, so we have, because we are unable to get street connections in an east-west direction right up the hill there, we asked for alternative street standards and then agreed to put in pedestrian connections rather than street connections.
And I would guess that looking at the one at the top central, the reason you have it staged three ways is maybe topography. It's just easier to get through that way?
Yeah, it's difficult to get streets through there.
And that leads to my main concern, which is the grade. The five segments of 15% grade. And I'd like you to point out where they are in this. But I also heard talking from, I think, Olivia about how in all your working together, you came up with some way to save trees and to do other things with the topography. Is the grading of the road in any way related to trying to save significant trees? Or is it related purely to the topography?
Well, as, as we were working with staff and identifying multiple things that had to happen. Access to adjoining properties, being able to get, to get the street system to minimize the number of places where we exceeded 12% and, and to make sure that we had grading, because we provided grading, a conceptual grading plan for the site to show how we could make the street system work and minimize the impact of trees. That's where that came about. Now, like I said, when you have to put, you have a site that's 10 or 12% and all of a sudden you have to put a stretch of 130 feet of 5% in there, you've got to make it up someplace. So, that's where the 15% comes, came into play in different, in different segments there in order to be able to, to get back up, to be able to make those connections to adjoining properties and to minimize the grading impacts on the site.
That would also then pertain to some of the intersections you're talking about? And or if you're level or leveled at the top to get there or to get down from there, you might have to go-
Yeah, so you have, you'll see that, that in here, there's, there, there, not all the intersections are just T-intersections. I have, particularly on the, on the northern side, I have some cross intersections that have to occur. So, in those cross intersections, then each of those streets have to come together in a way that I can ma, maintain that, that maximum street transition of 5% through there. And then if I can't get up fast enough to get to them to then flatten out, then it just compounds itself when I try to stub into the next piece of property.
I, I understand perfectly, and I, well, not perfectly, I understand imperfectly. And I will tell you that I was the one who called it up. And I called it up because of the questions about grade-
Okay.
-and the questions about just the size of the development. I thought it needed to be kind of further looked at. And your response to my questions and your presentation and Olivia's have been very helpful in that regard.
We, we do work very closely with the fire department now. They, they are very, they are very particular about-
I saw where the fire department said, "We don't object to the grades."
Yeah, and they, and we've committed now in lot, not just this development, but other developments now, where we've committed that for those segments of streets that were going to be in excess of the, of the maximum, but that they're willing to sign off on that things like addition, that fire sprinkling for those, for those buildings and stuff take place. So, we've, we've worked hard to figure out how to take advantage of all the different tools we can in there.
And one final question, Mr. Mayor. There's no retaining walls here like there were out, I think it was the Dogwood Development with the four phases. We don't have to have the retaining walls.
We, we, right now, as it's proposed, we don't have, we don't have retaining walls that will, that, that are part of the street system now. I wouldn't say that by the time we build the stormwater facility-
Yeah, right.
...some things, we have, where we have to create a place to store and蓄water that we won't have some retaining walls associated with that, but-
Sure, but not with the streets, okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank, oops, I'm sorry, Jackie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a follow-up question. So, there was a letter that was included with, as an addendum, as written testimony from the Morningside Neighborhood Association.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to?
Go, go ahead, Counselor. He's just waving at me.
And according to the Morningside Neighborhood Association, they mentioned that it looks like you had given a presentation to the neighborhood association and that they were, it was a promise that there was supposed to be a pedestrian sidewalk for full length of Reed Road frontage all the way. And there, okay, never mind.
Are you comfortable?
We didn't get to hear that.
Yeah, ask, ask the whole question.
Yeah, let's get it on the, really, let's get it on the record and make sure it's clear.
And they were recommending a condition 49 requiring a bike pedestrian path on Reed Road. Can you speak to that?
So, we, so as I pointed out and, and as, as the staff has showed, as part of, as part of this project and the construction, we will be making a, a half-street improvement along Reed, along all of our frontages, which include the park property as it's created, from, from Battle Creek Road all the way to the north end of the site that's shown in blue up on the screen there. And that will, that, that improvement will include not only the street improvements, but, but pedestrian facilities. It's a, since it's a, it's a minor arterial, I believe it is, so it'll have a bike, it'll have a bike path on it. And then staff is also asking for us to provide some additional on-street parking along the park there, so it'd be similar to, to what you have on Mildred Lane up by the, the park. Right, but that park up there, which is, that's an arterial, but it has bump outs for that. So, it'd be very similar to that.
So, the answer is absolutely yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I get too wordy sometimes.
I know, but it's interesting to hear how you get there.
Just a quick one and I wanted to have a comment as well, but Ex-Parte contact. I was at the Neighborhood Association meeting on Wednesday as well. And I know the previous month I'd mentioned that they were putting in the off-street parking for the park as well. And then at this last week's meeting, they said there weren't any sidewalks in it. And I, Morningside made the motion while I was there and, and Jeff James was to write a letter, which we got today. Did that come in through normal channels as well? Okay, so it was just mailed to Counselor Anderson, Leong, and myself.
Okay, what to say?
And so, I forwarded it across, basically wanting to make sure that there were sidewalks.
It wasn't, Mr. Mayor, it wasn't much different than the letter we have here. But I will say that the letter came to me and Counselor Nanki and I think Counselor Leong.
Correct.
And, and that was it.
And I forwarded that to the city attorney to make sure it got into the record.
Great minds and all that. I forwarded the same thing to the city attorney.
Right, so it's in the record?
Yes.
Very good. All righty.
So, if, if I may, then just to Mr. Rins.
Sure. Sure.
Um, thank you. You can tell it's a complex project by the number of phases that you have included inside of it as well. Um, the, the, the street access right on Battle Creek, close to the, the intersection with Reed, is, is that of adequate standard distant?
We, it, we requested a, a approval, alternative street standard approval for that because, because it does get closer to the intersection than the standards would set out. But it is the, it is the, the best location that we could come up with to make the connection, given the fact that there's a waterway to the north of us and we're coming away from the Cooper intersection as well. So you have, you have a lot of things trying to happen in that stretch of Battle Creek there. So we felt that this was, this is the best location and, and staff did, did agree, reluctantly did agree that that was the best we could do there.
Okay, 'cause I know that very busy at rush hour traffic as well. And I'm just concerned people trying to shoot in and out of that.
There, there will be a future light at the Reed-Battle Creek intersections that will help ease some of that in the future, so.
Excellent. Thanks.
Okay, any further questions? All righty. Oh, anything for Olivia? Okay.
Just verify.
Is there any, anyone who hasn't testified on this particular project that wanted to at this point? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move staff recommendation, which includes the modification of the planning administrator's decision to correct two scripters' errors and that we approved the application.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to special orders of business and that will be to Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of motions to, under special orders of business. The first one, I move to direct staff to prepare an emergency declaration for council's consideration at the, no later than the January twenty-seventh meeting to allow the safe-sleep shelter at nineteen-ten Front Street to increase capacity to nineteen.
Second. Second by Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we've discussed this in depth already. This will allow us some additional shelter capacity that is sorely needed and I wholeheartedly support the motion.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Councilor Hoy?
A brief moment, please. I apologize.
All right, I move that we direct staff to allow use of Pringle Hall as a temporary overnight shelter and prepare an emergency declaration no, for no later than the January twenty-seventh council meeting.
Second. Second by Kazer. Discussion? Councilor Nanki? Oh, Councilor Hoy?
Thank you. We have an opportunity that staff has identified to allow for a new temporary overnight shelter at Pringle Hall. It's city-owned property. We can do it fairly quickly. We can do it, I think, without all of the barriers we've been running into from private entities. This is a city-owned facility that we can get to, get online right away and I think it's an excellent use of the building.
Go ahead, Councilor.
I'm sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do have a question a bit, is, a question before I make a comment. Is this intended to be a temporary shelter for a certain period of time?
Do you want to answer that?
For like ninety days, thirty days?
I'd be happy to answer it. I believe the, the staff, I believe it will come back as, just through March thirty-first. Yes, just temporarily.
Okay, all right, and, all right, that, that's helpful to me. You know, when I wanted to create a designated area for folks to camp, it was certainly is a last resort. And I think we all agree that shelter, overnight emergency shelter is a last resort. Everyone should be indoors. There's no question about that. And I just want to reiterate that as far as I see it, we as a city need a coordinated approach to homelessness. I think we all recognize this is a crisis and I think we all recognize the need for a coordinated approach that we can all get on board with so that members of our city, members of our community know what we're doing and understand why we're doing what we're doing. I support having temporary shelter space because as I see it, we need both a short-term and a long-term solution. The short-term solution is temporary shelter space. It's certainly superior to car camping. It's certainly superior to camping, period. And it's certainly superior to sitting or lying outside of our business storefronts, no question about that. And I think we all agree with that. And I just really want to encourage our council that we have to follow evidence-based practices and Housing First is the nationally recognized model. Finding permanent housing is the single most effective way to end homelessness. Not manage it, not chase people around town, not spend a lot of our dedicated first responders' time shuffling people from one street corner to another, but to actually get folks off the street for good, for their own sake and for the rest of our community as well. So I'm supportive of having the temporary shelter space for sure. But I also encourage us to remember the national and evidence-respected model, and that is housing first. And I'm hopeful that as more money shakes out for that, as more beds, as more houses are actually built, then we can start shifting more money from quote-unquote managing homelessness to actually reducing homelessness in a permanent and compassionate and a cost-effective way. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your support for our Housing First program. I think we'll continue to enlarge that as time goes on and the housing gets available. So, very good. We really appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also appreciate Councilor Nordike's comments. And I just want to remind the public who might be listening that we spend far, far more money housing individuals than we have ever spent managing homelessness. Managing homelessness is really new territory for us, but we spend literally millions of dollars housing folks at this point. And not that that's enough, I'm not suggesting that, but we do, just so people are aware, we spend a lot of money on affordable housing, low-income housing, Housing First, and we're, we have more places coming online and I'm very excited about it.
Councilor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. One, the ATRAP Housing First model is, is a wonderful model, but we also have to remember that those people that are sitting there right on the line, if we can keep them on the proper side of the line, they never drop in to potentially sink deeper into that. And so just to make sure that we're focusing enough resources there. And then it sounded like there was a couple of people confused who testified tonight regarding the emergency declaration. Can, can you speak to what that actually does? It's not calling up the National Guard or FEMA in.
Or FEMA.
It's, it's city, uh, emergency declaration.
So under a, uh, the city council has the authority to declare an emergency. It wouldn't, wouldn't be necessarily be a weather emergency, which is a particular subset in our code. It might be something like along the lines of a housing emergency. It wouldn't affect the state, it wouldn't affect the federal government, so state resources and FEMA resources wouldn't be involved in that. It would allow us to essentially waive certain provisions of our zoning code and potentially provisions of our procurement code to act quickly to address the situation.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Anderson.
You know, I appreciate all the talk about Housing First and what we're trying to do and everything else. And that's all extremely well and good. And that's, that is a permanent solution to our problem. But what we're talking about now with this motion is a temporary solution to our problem. And I think that's where we should focus our discussion on this. So, um, I have a couple of questions and, and I'm a little unsure as to the effect of the motion. Is the motion to do it or is the motion to come back on January twenty-seventh with a motion to declare an emergency and then go to Pringle Park?
Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Councilor Anderson, for your question. This will direct staff to prepare items for our consideration. And I also want to take this opportunity, some people may have picked up on my language. I said no later than January twenty-seventh because we have a work session next week that I'm really hoping that we can slip a couple of these into a special meeting on so we don't lose another week. That may not be possible. That's why I gave that flexible language of no later than January twenty-seventh so the staff have the option of next week or the following week. And then we'll have a full debate about, about the merits.
Would you, Councilor, would your, for the public really, would your advice be to watch the agenda for the twenty-first?
Absolutely. It could pop up either on next Tuesday's meeting, and our meeting next week is on a Tuesday because of the holiday. So it's next Tuesday or the following Monday. Keep an eye on that agenda. We'll know this Thursday afternoon, this next Thursday afternoon, which, which if it's not on the, the Thursday afternoon agenda for Tuesday, it'll be on the following week. So keep an eye on that.
I've got more. So the next thing I look at is, um, we spent a lot of time listening to people who were affected by, uh, who both live and work by the situation downtown. We've heard a lot from the people who were concerned about the original motion to have a designated camping space across the river. And tonight is the first time anybody in the public knows that now there is another recommendation. So, um, that is an area that is, you know, on one side and to the, to the east and to the south with residential area. And immediately south is the hospital, immediately south and, excuse me, on the west side and the south is residential. On the south is the hospital. On the east side is the hospital. Across the creek there is, are a bunch of medical offices and then also Safe Corporation is kind of kitty-cuttering from there. And it seems to me that we heard from everybody else, we ought to hear from these people. So I don't know if we need to have a public hearing or if we just need to have people come and testify in the public comment section like they, like they did on various other issues today.
I would hope at this point we're not headed toward, this is not heading us toward a public hearing. There's no-
That's fine, but I-
But the public comment period-
Yeah, I, I would suggest-
Sure you'll alert your constituents.
I will. I would suggest, um, you know, under the due process situation, notice and an opportunity to be heard, but I would suggest that perhaps the city manager could inform the, um, um, non-residential folks that are around there that this is what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, you know, I will emphasize that this is a temporary solution to end on the end of March.
That's correct. Councilor Lewis?
To follow up on Councilor Anderson's comments and also Councilor Hoy's, Pringle Hall isn't just a, a normal place. It's a special place in Salem. And, and I don't know if I would say housing the homeless is the best utilization of that place. But we are in a crisis. And I am proud of the city staff for bringing back this recommendation. It will work in a short amount of time to bring us relief that we didn't get under our original plan. Um, so I'll be, I'll be supporting the motion, but I'm gonna add at this point, it sure would be nice if some of the property owners that the city has reached out to and Arch's project has reached out to, it would be nice, and I would hope that they would take this occasion to reconsider and to offer up facilities that they control without the fear that seems to have driven them away from participating with this effort.
Yeah, I'd, I'd second that too. The property owners as well as the neighbors who responded with a "not in my neighborhood" response in a couple of those cases, I would think from my perspective, almost inappropriately. So I, I hope there's folks out there examining, they're taking a moment to stop and think about why they objected to us coming into certain parts of this. This is, as folks mentioned tonight, these are our neighbors. These are folks that need housing. Um, and we're, I think we're going to meet the need with this along with some of the other space that's available, some of the shelter space that is not being used, the addition of nine spaces at the women's shelter that were, we approved tonight. I mean, I think we're starting to put those pieces together. And then I think, I hope at some point, because we keep hearing the discussion, folks will stop for a moment and take a look at the various projects that are in stream right now heading this direction, whether it's Yaquena Hall, Fisher Road, a low-barrier shelter. I mean, there's just a whole, and the UGM project, there's a substantial amount of shelter and housing space coming forward, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, and that's why I-
Yeah.
-emphasize this is a temporary solution and we're working on much longer-term solutions. And I would add to Councilor Lewis's comments and support them. And I particularly want to say the other governmental agencies that are involved. Um, I'm looking at the state and I'm looking at the county. I mean, we are not the social service arm of, of those three governments. And we're the ones who it's falling on. And so I, I'm particularly look at the state to see what they could potentially do. And I know they're doing some things and money and other things, but here's another temporary-
Yeah.
-potential solution that the state has refused to take any responsibility for.
Well, they are, I, I want to just be very, very clear on this. The state has actually been working with us, I think, reasonably well. I, you know, I, you asked me to and I did send a letter to Department of Administrative Services specifically regarding Yaquena Hall plus some other housing. And we've now had the cost of Yaquena go from four hundred thousand to zero. I mean, they're stepping up. They, DAS has offered to join us at the legislature in February for some additional funds to help us with the costs that have occurred to us because of the foot-dragging that kind of went on over the past three years with that north campus property. President Courtney has been very, is, is speaking very generously of his support for us getting a, a low-barrier shelter. The governor is very interested in seeing a navigation center in this city. I think the pieces are coming together. Unfortunately, as in all crises, the crisis is going while you're trying to run out some of this other stuff. Hopefully we'll have met the challenge. The other, Councilor Anderson, I think I'll be talking about next month in the state of the city is the change, what I believe is the changing mission of the city. I think as we look at what we're being confronted with, there is, there's some real mission creep going on here that we need to quit saying it ain't our problem, because it is. And we can look to Marion and Polk Counties and we're just, uh, we need to at some point begin to accept beyond our four hundred thousand dollars we've done for social services. We need to be looking into a, into a bigger, a bigger orb for, for help. And I think we'll, we'll be talking a lot with the county and a lot with the state about how to readjust the relationships here. Councilor Kazer?
Thank you. And I, I agree with a lot of the comments that my fellow councillors have made. And just to add to them is I think that there is a misconception among the public that the city of Salem owns a lot of empty buildings-
Yeah.
...in land. And that's just not true.
No.
We own parks, um, which are not, usually don't contain buildings. Having an actual building as opposed to a camp is very different. It means the infrastructure needs are different. It means the way you manage that site can be a lot different, in a lot of respects, a lot easier. So I also want to echo some of the, the, the comments that were made about private property owners kind of stepping up to help us out here because we don't own a lot of property as a city government. And it would be helpful if we had private property owners who were interested in, in entering into a partnership and agreement that would allow us to, to have some type of shelter space or even as a, as a site for some type of permanent thing. But it really is gonna be a community effort to get this done. And I, and I hope that this is, while it's temporary, it'll lead to some other outcomes down the road that'll be beneficial and people can see that this can be a model for success and a way we can handle this. But going forward, we're gonna need more help. So I'm, I'm very supportive. I hope that, that staff will really see this as an urgent and important task over the next week so we can get this potentially on, on a special council meeting. Because I would like that to happen a week from tomorrow, instead of waiting an extra week.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion passes.
I have one more, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I move to direct staff, I move to direct staff present the necessary information at the January twenty-seventh council meeting for council to approve a program to, as soon as possible, allow vehicle camping on private property with owner permission, following the best practices and recommendations outlined in the staff report.
Second. Second by Kazer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I believe that this will also need to include in the emergency declaration that'll authorize the waiver of certain land use regulations that might prohibit vehicle camping and expedite administrative action. So I'm, I hope the staff will include that. The, this is a temporary pilot project as well, which, and then we can evaluate what we, what we might do in the future to make this, to allow it on a permanent basis. But this would be sort of a, a pilot to kind of get this moving-
would be sort of a pilot to kind of get this moving for this year and see what we need to do infrastructure-wise, and what nonprofits might need to do infrastructure-wise to maybe incorporate this into a permanent solution.
Right. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm running off of memory since my tablet's having issues this evening. It's with IT, so they're hitting it with a hammer. I would just caution, I don't know how many vehicles are being vehicle camp, car camping over at Church in the Park, but if I remember, the best practices was a maximum of six vehicles at any given location, to where we may be impacting what it is they're doing, to where we may want to have some kind of a variance.
Be careful as, yeah, we don't, yeah.
We certainly don't want to negatively impact the situation.
No, if they've got something working
And, yeah, and they have a
Special skills
My spoke to the gentleman, he's on the SEMCA board as well, and I'll be there tomorrow morning. So they don't let people come visit, the car people, after 10:00 PM, and they have access to go inside and use the facilities as well. So they were in a pretty strict operation there. So I just want to make sure we're not hurting that effort.
Yeah. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I support this motion. I do have some questions, and first to comment. I was a member of a church in Eugene for a number of years, and we did that, and that was part of the Eugene program. And I will say that it worked wonderfully, and there were benefits to that, not just to the people whom we were taking care, but benefit to the members of the church, benefit to human interaction, as opposed to just saying, "They're over there, and we're here, and we're not together." And that, really, we gained as much from that as church, as the people who we were trying to help gained. I do have a question that seems a little inconsistent, and I don't know who, Norman, you're the guy who signed his name on this report. On page two, it says that you can have somebody sleep in a vehicle camper trailer in the driveway of a single-family residence, but on page three, on your first bullet points, it said recommended standards only allowed on properties operated by a nonprofit et cetera, and not located within or adjacent to a residential zone. So which is it? Can single-family residents do this if they provide the facilities and everything else, or is it forbidden in residential zones?
From a practical standpoint, I'm not sure how I can make a distinction between any sort of instance where you might see this sort of camping behavior happen on a regular residence. Wherever we are contemplating this, within the language here of this report, what we're really trying to focus on is creating some sort of allowable use for those six vehicles as defined on these properties that certainly fit these location requirements. So the mention here of this, of this type of camping that could occur on a driveway for a single-family home, while mentioned here, it's not our primary focus of the report itself.
Well, so I understand that, but I think maybe you're also saying that if somebody, a single-family person, a single-family residence wanted to allow somebody to park their car in their driveway and live there, there's nothing that would stop them from doing that.
In so many words, but I'm also looking to the city attorney to help me a little bit here as well.
Yeah, I'd ask Brady Rogers to come up.
Yeah, I'm understanding that compliance is on a complaint basis, so maybe that's the practical answer, but I don't know.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. My name is Brady Rogers. I'm your neighborhood enhancement administrator. The mention in the staff report of parking or vehicle parking in a driveway in a residential neighborhood, that's a standard that Eugene has had.
Yeah.
That's not one that we were putting forward, is one we would like in Salem. There actually are extensive rules about occupying RVs in driveways and residential areas.
I expected there were.
So as you, as this is brought forward to us under the councillor's motion, that will not be part of the proposal.
I would not see it as part of the proposal.
Set.
No, that answers my question.
Okay.
Counselor Kazer.
Thank you. Just a procedural question, because I can't remember now what the motion was. Is this coming back to us later this month, not during the special, possibly special council meeting? Okay, the 27th?
My motion on this one was specific to the 27th. I don't want to overload this. We have other business on next week's meeting.
Set the city attorney.
So what I think we would probably do is bring back an emergency declaration, most likely on the 21st, subject to the city manager's approval, that basically declares a housing emergency, and then those would be followed up with orders issued by the city manager to implement. The declaration itself will have broad brush allowance of a temporary shelter at Pringle Hall, the car camping and the safe sleep, and then those will be implemented through specific orders that the city manager would issue. Thank you. Do I need to amend my motion? No. Thank you.
And it'll come with rules, or how will you?
Yes, each order would be specific to the type of program. So the car camping program might take a little bit more to put in the order. The other two might be a little bit easier.
And are they available for public comment, then, is, how does the public comment, or do they?
When the emergency declaration comes back for council approval, that's your opportunity to, the public to comment on that and to raise concerns.
Okay. Okay, any, any questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Information reports. Anyone have any questions on any of these comments, thoughts? All righty, everybody's okay? Okay, we will move on then to first readings.
Ordinance Bill number 220, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 1096 Hoffman Road Northeast annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District Number One.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we conduct a first reading of ordinance bill number 2-20, annexing, applying city of Salem RA single-family residential zoning for Marion County UD Urban Development and UT-5, urban transition-5 acres, and withdrawing from Marion County Fire District Number One for a 1.06 property located at 1096 Hoffman Road Northeast.
Second, somebody?
Aye.
Second from Nanki. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next, please.
Ordinance Bill number 320, an ordinance declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 4696 Center Street Northeast and 592 Heil Lane Northeast annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning, prescribing Salem Area Comprehensive Plan map designation, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District Number One and East Salem Sewer and Granage District.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we conduct first reading of ordinance bill 3-20, annexing, changing the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan map designation of the southern part of territory, 592 Heil Lane Northeast and Marion County Assessor Map and tax slot 072 W29 BC 03801 from developing residential, the multifamily residential, changing the zoning from Marion County UD Urban Development to city of Salem RM-2 Multifamily Residential Two, and withdrawing from the Marion County Fire District Number One and the East Salem Sewer and Granage District for a 5.04 acre property located at 4696 Center Street Northeast and 592 Heil Lane Northeast 97301.
Second. Second by Kazer. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next.
This one may take a little time.
Okay.
Ordinance Bill number 120, an ordinance relating to multifamily housing, amending SRC 111.001, 112.015, 250.005, 400.005, .030, 510.005, 511.005, 512.010, 513.001, .005, .010, .015, 514.005, .010, .015, 515.005, .010, .020, .025, 521.005, .010, .015, 522.005, .010, .015, 523.005, .010, .015, 524.005, .010, 525.005, .010, 530.040, .050, 531.010, 532.015, .020, 533.010, .020, 534.010, .020, 535.005, .010, .015, 540.005, 541.005, 542.005, .015, 543.005, .015, 544.005, .015, 545.005, .010, .015, 546.005, .015, 547.005, .015, 548.005, .015, 549.005, .015, 550.005, 551.005, .005, .015, .015, 552.005, .010, .015, 553.005, .015, 554.005, .015, 555.005, .015, 556.005, .010, 603.020, .025, 604.015, .050, 550.005, 551.005, .005, .015, .015, 552.005, .010, .015, 614.005, .010, 617.005, 619.015, .020, .025, 621.015, 622.015, 623.015, 624.015, 626.015, .020, .025, 631, excuse me, .010, .015, .020, 700.005, .010, .050, 800.055, .065, 804.020, .025, .050, 806.015, .025, .030, .035, .040, .055, and .075, repealing and replacing SRC Chapter 702
and creating new provisions SRC 700.081.
Could you repeat that? Okay, Nanki, did you have a question on one of those?
Could you repeat those?
Yeah, that 3-03 dash, okay. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move city council conduct first reading of ordinance bill 1-20, amending the Salem Revised Code to update design standards for multifamily housing and related regulations.
Second. Second by Kazer. Any discussion?
Louis.
Sorry, I saw Kazer do it.
I heard me.
Okay, Louis. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we'll go to second reading.
Ordinance number Bill, ordinance Bill number 1819, an ordinance relating to amending the Salem Transportation System Plan, a component of the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, and amending SRC 64.005. Counselor Leung. Counselor Osik.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Kazer.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, I don't see any further business. We, city council's adjourned. Unless you, do you see something that'll take a while here?
No.
Yeah, we should be able to get through this very quickly. I'm going to call this meeting of the Salem Urban Renewal Agency for January 13th to order. If you please call it well.
Board Member Kazer.
Present.
Board Member Anderson.
Um, here.
Board Member
Hi, I'm here, I'm here.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member Leung.
Present.
Board Member Osik.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Nordike.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Bennett.
Here. All righty, we haven't even signed up. Okay, I have no one signed up for public comment. Anyone want to address the Urban Renewal Agency? Beeman, not you?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we do have an addition to the agenda.
Ah, okay, you want to add that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move additions and deletions to the Urban Renewal Agency agenda, which is item 3.3B, revised documents, attachments for Heidecke.
Yeah. This is one that was redacted and hard to read, so it, hopefully it's easier to read. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, the consent calendar, then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second by Nanki.
Consent calendar includes item 3.1A, which is the November 25, 2019 draft of Urban Renewal Agency Minutes, 3.1B, December 2, 2019 draft Urban Renewal Agency Minutes, and 3.2A, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the McGillchrist Urban Renewal Area, item 3.2B, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the Mill Creek Industrial Park Urban Renewal Area, item 3.2C, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area, item 3.2D, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area, item 3.2E, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the South Waterfront Urban Renewal Area, item 3.2F, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the West Salem Urban Renewal Area, item 3.3A, assignment of Union Gospel Mission of Salem's Capital Improvement Program grant to the Union Gospel Mission of Salem Support Corporation, item 3.3B, recommendation of reappointments to the North Gateway Redevelopment Advisory Board and appointments to the West Salem Redevelopment Advisory Board. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I don't see any further business. We are adjourned.